Thanks.
You guys just try comments for me. Have us on YouTube, sorry. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, it is six oh one. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God. United States of America.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to add four point seven, a multi-year with Madison One to Bosse's.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and the budget hearing on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will now call up David Little, Executive Director of Rural Schools, and Dr. Helfand to do a studio video contest recognition.
Hi, I'm Dave Little. I direct the Rural Schools Association of New York. And every year, we run a video contest. In fact, we were here last year for this same video contest. And it's sponsored by the New York Schools Insurance Reciprocal. They gave us the money for the travel to go around and hand out the awards, as well as the award money. It's the most fun thing I do all year long, without question, because the contest is designed not only to encourage the creativity and the technical expertise of students, but the topic is about showing what's important in your community and why your rural school is important to the community, what's special about you, all those kind of things. Anything within that kind of a range is awesome. The idea that you have winners here at any level in this contest is extraordinary. There are three hundred and eleven members of the Rural Schools Association. It's almost half of the school districts in the state identify themselves as rural, and they're all eligible for the contest. And there are dozens of entrants ranging from people who do it on their own, with their cellphone, to entire Bosse's classes that have phenomenal... South Hold in the Hamptons is... You should see the technical expertise of this stuff, because they have multiple advisors and actual television cameras and all kinds of stuff. So the fact that anyone else ever wins at any level is remarkable. It takes extraordinary talent and creativity and insight. It's awesome. And the fact that one of your winners from here actually has won before is really remarkable. I mean, it ought to be, given the odds, I mean, it always just strikes me, that given the odds that a small rural school has this kind of success in a statewide competition like that is extraordinary. It really ought to be a source of pride to you that you've helped boost somebody who can do this type of thing. And two people this year who can do this type of thing. So I wanna bring up Amelia and Noah, if you would come up. I'll get them right for her. Yeah, I got them. So, Amelia, this is your second time? Congratulations, that's really awesome.
That's just you.
Yeah? I keep my little check envelope, but Noah, you get money and this. So congratulations, well done both, I really appreciate it. And I understand we get to see...
We get to see the video. So the theme this year was the miracle of rural education. And they worked very hard to basically get different sections from school, various interviews, and it's about three plus minutes long. And we're gonna take a look at it.
Very cool.
Just produced it.
Walk over there.
Yeah, yes. Let me, while you're doing that, let me just tell you why we picked that theme. From our inception about fifty years ago as a program at Cornell, we had always been at the Otis Saga in Cooperstown from the beginning. And last year, we finally just outgrew it. And so we made the move. Now we're at the Olympic Center for our summer conference at the Olympic Center in Lake Placid. And I had this idea years ago when I worked at state school boards, and I could never sell them on the idea, which is really fortunate, because now I get to do it myself. So we're opening the conference on the Olympic ice in Herb Brooks Arena. Mike Aruzioni, the team captain of Team USA, we're gonna play the famous Al Michaels call, "Do you believe in miracles?" And then Aruzioni is gonna come out and explain about the miracle of rural education. So that's where this theme came from, because it really is extraordinary. If you work in advocacy on behalf of rural schools, you know all about the challenges. In fact, I was actually kind of, I won't say called on the carpet, but a couple of years ago, we had a professor who came to be a keynote speaker at our conference. And he had heard me talk about our challenges and things. This guy's name is Dr. Ben Winchester from University of Minnesota. And he does rural research. And he kind of like pulled me off to the side and said, "Why would anybody come to a rural area the way that you talk about it?" And I said, "Well, my job is to talk and try and fix the problems," you know? And he showed me a whole, it was an epiphany for me. He showed me a completely different way to look at it, for practical reasons. You know, I'm thinking, "We have a teacher recruitment problem because we can't afford to compete and pay them." He said, "No, the reason you can't have, why you've got a teacher recruitment problem is because you don't have housing for them." Statistically, statistically, people are living in their houses until they're dragged off to the nursing home now. They don't retire to Florida anymore, they stay in their house. You don't have any housing turnover. And he listed a whole bunch of those types of reasons that have nothing to do with the quality of what happens, you know? And it really changed things and got me thinking about the miracle that really... That was half of it. The other half is looking at what rural schools did during the pandemic. That was collaborative and innovative and creative. And it just showed you what you could do when SED and the state of New York says, "We don't know what to do about this, you're on your own, ask for forgiveness afterwards, because you know, you can handle this however you want." Right? And we saw amazing things happen. So we kind of wanted to capture that in the theme, so that's where the theme came from, just saying. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, really appreciate your time. Congratulations.
So I wanna show the almost three-minute clip, and then I also wanna show a second twenty-nine second trailer, which I'll explain after this one.
I live in the community, and I feel like I know our students really well. I see them at restaurants and at the grocery store. We have a, I think, a shared common experience. I really appreciate how close-knit we are, how well we get to know each other. I'm also the health fund, and I have the chemistry teacher. I also teach the Bible and A B test. First of all, scenery, it's beautiful. It's central New York, so beautiful, calm, peaceful, close-knit community. The fact that we are three K through twelve, we've got elementary school on building, the middle school, and the high school. And we even have a CNS daycare right next to it. So that means for some kids, they will live in the same complex since they were one and a half years old, it's okay to do.
I am Mark Harcourt, I am the middle school high school principal. And athletic director this year. Hamilton is a great place to work, has great people, great students.
My name is Corey Go Chris. I was a student here for five years, and I love this school. I would say we're doing all the classes that I took and preparing me for trade school, giving me a little bit more knowledge than some of the other students, and it set me up really well for a job placement.
I think being able to have my daughter be in the same building as me so that I can see her.
My name is Jeff Sminer, and I'm a social studies teacher. Everybody in town is on board for education, everybody in town is on board for the arts, everybody in town is on board for extracurriculars and all that stuff matters, big time. One of the things that I love is that athletics cuts across every demographic. It's not just the kids who are academic, it's not just the kids who are physically gifted, and they all get, and they have to have the same role. And they all have to work through difficulties and the highs and highs and the lows and lows together.
It's not gonna go to you, we'll play something else. We are working to make this particular video a promotional video that's gonna be on the Hamilton website. So Amelia and Noah have in meantime interviewed Mr. Dowsland and gotten some additional footage of the night's note that we use for live streaming. So we're just doing some finishing touches. So within the next week or two, that same video with a few changes will hopefully be on our website, and I think it shows really good. And the other change that I decided to make was to really end the video with the Hamilton Center School mission statement. That's on our website, so that can be shown. Let me see if I can get to the other tab. I might need your help, Chris. Do I just X out of here, or?
Uh, scroll down.
Scroll down.
Nope, other way.
Other way. Oh, yep, there you go. So another competition that we are doing as part of the broadcast and media production class is a competition that's called the Beyond the Peaks, which is another student film competition. And it's really centered in Plattsburgh. It's associated with Mountain PBS. We even spent an hour with, I think it was a producer, and got some advice about this film that they're doing. They've submitted the film, I'm only gonna show you the twenty-nine second trailer. It's kind of a spoof. Amelia, Noah, come up here and explain it, all right? Come up here and explain it.
Down here?
Yeah.
Um, we should start, has anyone here seen like the show Jury Duty?
Okay, okay.
So last year, we watched it a lot, we came up obsessed with the idea. Basically, it's a show where they take eleven improv actors, and there's a bunch of secret cameras, and one person actually thinks they're on jury duty, and they like stage certain events to happen, and it's like a goofy court case.
Everything is fake.
And everyone's in on it, except for one person. Yeah. So we decided, we were also considering around the same time making a documentary about one of our best friends Abby, and like kind of like top secret kind of theory, and like just like film her day in the life, and then like reveal it to her later. So we decided to combine those two ideas, and we ended up making... She's a member of tech club, and we're co-president to that club, so... So we manipulated our powers as presidents and we put everyone in on a prank against Abby, but she's okay with it now. For rehearsals, we got everyone together, we wrote together like a script of things that would go wrong during the meeting. And yeah, she said secret cameras, secret microphones, and we ended up making this. Can we show the trailer? Let's do it.
Nonorder, now. I'm nervous, I'm gonna be eager, but I don't think I can trust after what I've learned today.
That's the trailer. Don't go to the next thing, no, 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 no.
Yes, welcome to the first musical of the year.
Stop. Yeah, that's a real loop. So I have to laugh. So this three-minute film has been submitted to the Beyond the Peaks, but you, five minutes. But you also submitted it to the Hamilton International Film Festival. So that is really exciting. And that's gonna be happening at the end of July, I think, together with some submissions from Mr. Rose's class. Help me out here.
Uh, Donovan Litt? Bill was the root chair.
Yeah. So that's exciting. So thank you for, yeah, for listening and watching.
Great job.
Great job. And yes, you can be excused now, we won't make you stay.
Thank you, Mr. Little. You bet.
Yes, thank you so much.
I can't wait to see that movie.
I know, I wanna see the rest of it, like... Okay, I need a motion to approve the following consent agenda, which includes four point one through five point one, as recommended by the superintendent. Includes the treasurer's report, consideration of claims, transportation report, cafeteria report, cooperative bidding, intermunicipal agreement, multi-year with Madison One to Bosse's, and policies and regulations. And just to note, one is for information only on the policy.
I didn't, I don't see four point seven here, can you just explain?
Four point what?
The four point seven.
Four point seven, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, so we have our multi-function printers and copiers in the building, our big multi-function machines, are leased through a multi-year agreement through Madison One to Bosse's. So our current lease is expiring end of June. This is just a renewal for another four-year lease on those big machines. There's fiscal benefits by doing it through Bosse's, so we do it in that manner.
And Matt, this is separate from like the, what we're trying to do, cutting printers out and things like that? This is like the actual big machines that we may possibly just be going to those?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Separate from the central printer.
So, but...
Sorry.
I'm not sure. So this is all part of what we're doing internally as far as centralized printing. So we're gonna be adding additional multi-function machines. It's separate from the Bosse's print shop, it's separate from cooperative bidding. This is in itself is just the lease for the equipment that's here in the building.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll move. A second.
Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this brings us to six point one, our first community participation. We do ask that any community participation sticks to the agenda item for this first part. Chris, are you monitoring online?
Aye.
Let's see. Maggie.
All right, that being said, we will have a second community participation. Feel free to put your comments in the chat. Seven point one, personnel. I need a motion to accept the resignation of Rick Lotterhon, part-time food service helper, effective May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the superintendent, with sincere appreciation for their services rendered to the district.
Second.
Discussion will be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I need a motion to accept the resignation of Abigail Riley, elementary teacher, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the superintendent, with sincere appreciation for their services rendered to the district.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to accept the resignation of Frank Mazzio, head cleaner, effective May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the superintendent. This resignation is contingent upon the approval of the building maintenance helper position, effective June one, twenty twenty-four.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion will be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need a motion to approve the appointment of Margaret Parfit as probationary school nurse, effective September one, twenty twenty-four, through August thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the superintendent. This appointment will be approved pending fingerprint clearance.
Second.
Discussion will be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to approve the appointment of Frank Mazzio as probationary building maintenance helper, effective June one, twenty twenty-four, to May thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the business manager and superintendent.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Melissa Latella as a tenured elementary teacher, effective July one, twenty twenty-four, following a successful completion of the probationary period as recommended by the elementary principal and superintendent.
Second.
Discussion will be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Jessica Hoopel as a tenured music teacher, effective July one, twenty twenty-four, following a successful completion of the probationary period as recommended by the elementary and secondary principals and superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Heather Thomas as a tenured school building leader, elementary principal, effective July one, twenty twenty-four, following a successful completion of the probationary period and is recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Congratulations on this well-deserved milestone in your career. Thank you for your dedication to the students and the community. Once again, congratulations on this remarkable achievement. Mr. Dowsland would like to present you with a certificate and gift, and we'd like to take a picture with you.
Cupcakes.
Gotta stretch. Just a little. Stand all the time. Gotta work to go.
Do you wanna keep separate or all together?
All together. All right, ready? One, two, three. Hey, can you take one? Hot dogs, too, because the website needs it. This is hamburger, isn't it? Okay, that's hamburger. The other way. Manscape. Just take...
Torture.
Congratulations.
You guys are hot dogs, if you like.
Yeah.
Hammer or hot dog? It's a rule.
Yeah, I've not heard that one before.
I need a motion to abolish the non-instructional head cleaner position, effective June one, twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the superintendent. The current employee will be transitioning to another position within the district, eliminating the necessity for this position.
I'll move. A second.
Discussion in executive session? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Over and up clap for that one.
Doesn't get a cupcake either.
I need a motion to approve the recommendation of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion will be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need a motion to lease one school bus to the Village of Recreation Commission for the Summer twenty twenty-four program as recommended by the superintendent and with the following stipulations. The vehicle will be fully insured under the Village of Hamilton insurance policy to include collision, comp, fire, et cetera. All gas, oil will be provided by the Village of Hamilton. An approved active school bus driver presently on the HCS roster, if available, will be used to drive the vehicle as required.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I need a motion to approve the resolution regarding the annual organization meeting as read below.
A second.
Any discussion?
There's no time yet for it, it's just July fifteenth.
Correct.
Right, okay, yeah.
But typically, start the, into the organization meeting first, and then we're gonna be...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, this was just legal stuff that Jody had found that thought would be worth including.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to the policy committee for seven point five on policies and regulations.
There are no major changes in that, right?
No. No major changes. The eighty-five oh seven, the public report on revisions to district policies, that's a new one, I believe. And that just requires the board to review the district policies in accordance with the idea in Article eighty-nine of the New York Education Law. And then there's also zero zero seventeen and fifty-one hundred, which have just minor, minor changes, just clarification on that issue.
We'll now move to eight point one, superintendent's report.
I have two updates. Last week, both the Assembly and Senate passed the new teacher evaluation, principal evaluation, APPR plans, law, sorry. It just needs to be signed by the governor at this time, but it's looking like, as we've been talking through this, it's going to be approved, which will give more local control to the districts for teacher growth. It's gonna decouple state test scores. There will still be multiple measures for evaluations, so that'll be locally negotiated. Once signed by the governor, we have eight years to negotiate that plan, but we have been meeting, we've had four meetings with the HTA, with the administration, with the administrative team. So we're ahead of it, we're working on a new plan as soon as the governor signs. Hopefully, we'll be able to have that plan in place to present to you as a board to adopt, and then we can present it to New York State. Yep.
Thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you. The second good news is we are ready to present a draft of our new code of conduct. The administrative team has been working throughout the year on this draft plan. This is all centered around the infusion of restorative practices into our code of conduct, making it very explicit as far as expectations, the mission of the district, the code. It includes the extracurricular code of conduct, so we are ready to present this to steering teams, the inclusivity committee, stakeholders, to get some feedback and move along in that process. So we are finally there. So thank you to the administrative team for their hard work putting this together. It's been a process, and a lot of editing and looking at plans and putting together this plan. So we're finally there and happy to be able to present this for feedback.
Thank you all for your hard work on that.
Can you just quickly, like, tell us, after we get, after feedback and edits, when is this ready to...
So we have to do a public comment prior to a board meeting and allow that, the public to be able to comment on that. And then, once that is done, the board can adopt it. And once we make changes from all the stakeholder groups, we'll resent it for public comment, then the board will adopt it, and then we're good to go.
So are you hoping this will be in place by...
I don't know if we're gonna get there. It depends on how much feedback we can get. That is the plan right now, is to be able to present this for adoption for September when students walk through the door. But it's a kind of a compressed timeline, so I don't know if we can pull that off, but that's the plan. That's the hope.
Does this mirror the code of conduct in the board policies? Or is it...
It's not inclusive to the board policy code of conduct, but it does mirror some of the language in that code.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Can you, what's the main difference between, say, this and then the student handbook that has a lot of other kind of codes of conduct, like the dress code and the cellphone policy and all of those other things?
We've had a lot of talk about that internally, because we don't have three different documents, so we're trying...
and it said Madison County's informed us that the shared costs will go from fifty percent to fifteen. Is that our portion going down, or their portion, the third contributor?
Ours, yeah, yeah.
That's what I was hoping.
Same question.
Yeah, that is great news.
We kind of folded that rate into all, you know, with our budget kind of woes and cats, so that was a bit of good news that we got from them, really good timing.
Excellent. I was hoping it was that way, but that's really great news.
It is. It's, cost is minimal, the rewards are tremendous.
Yeah.
She, she actually conserves up to sixty families, which is a lot.
And we're at fifty-two now, you said? Was it fifty-two families?
Fifty-two, yeah. I, for C S B, it's sixty, if not then here, but some point next year. At that point, we could actually talk about another social worker. They're open to the idea if we could support that.
And if we went to a second one, would it still just be the fifteen percent portion?
Um, it starts at fifty.
It starts at fifty and.
Okay, and once we.
Yeah, we earned the fifteen percent. It has to do with collecting matter.
It has to do with their ability to bill.
Bill.
Her services.
Yeah. They needed to collect the certain.
Okay.
So, they met that goal, so.
Okay.
So, I actually have a meeting next week with Madison County to begin those discussions because we're nearing sixty.
Yeah.
Case load, so what does that look like to add another, if we can? What are those costs? So, stay tuned, because she's, her caseload keeps going up and up and up.
Yeah.
Quickly.
It's good.
It's good. Yeah, it's very good.
I had a question for Chris also, which I think is what we were getting at before with the printer thing, but you said that you met with the faculty to discuss the centralized, moving the centralized printing. How, how was that?
It's, um, it's mixed. I think there's some trepidation, but that's to be expected. It's a big change. I mean, we're committed to supporting them as much as we can through the transition. But yeah, I mean, it's a big change to their flow. So, there's some trepidation about it, but lots of people, everybody's great with it, but there's some trepidation about how it's going to go, so we're going to work as hard as we can to make sure that it's.
And this will all be housed just in one area, like in one space?
No, so, to try and explain how it works, so, you're familiar with cloud computing? So, the cloud is just somebody else's computer that goes far away from you. But now the printing will take place there, right? So, when a person sends their, hits print on their computer, no longer will go directly to the printers, that will go to this print server, okay? And then, so the printers just talk to that server.
Yeah.
And they don't care which, so you didn't send it to them, you sent it to the cloud. So, a teacher can go to any printer, anywhere, touch their ID to it, and it will release their job.
Oh, okay.
So, it's no longer like, I want to print to the elementary faculty room. Now he does the print.
Okay.
And whichever machine happens to be closest to you, or whichever one you're walking by, anywhere you're special, or whatever, will be where you print.
Oh, okay. It's totally different than what I have in my brain.
Yeah, me too.
So, just, just to give you a sense of the transition, we have, right now, we have seventy-ish?
Yeah.
Individual laser jet printers in classrooms that people can print to directly and instantly.
Okay.
It does, it, it's super convenient.
Yeah.
We understand that, but it's super expensive. The machines are at the end of their useful life. They're eight years.
Yep.
So, the amount of time that Chris and his staff are spending on these machines, the amount of money that we're spending on ink and toner.
Yeah.
And then, frankly, the, the amount of waste. By printing something, it can just sit, and it doesn't get picked up. Now, these jobs, you can, they can timeout, so you avoid that. Just, something gets printed and it sits on the machine, and after a few weeks, you end up with a stack of paper this high of unclean. So, it's really to improve efficiency, but there will be some growing pains for sure.
And we're going to strategically place printers throughout the building, so it's convenient for each hall or each wing of the building, and add two additional full-size printers.
Okay. Tensei has a.
Yes, Tensei.
All right, so I have a few questions. So, how many, you said you were adding two printers, but how many does that mean we have total, like, four?
No.
No.
More than that.
So, if I were to rattle them all off, it's the district office, the high school printer, the high school library, the high school guidance office, the elementary department, the elementary office, the elementary C S E, the elementary library. Mine was up.
Eight.
And one more, the new one we're adding, so that'd be nine. Eight or nine.
Nine?
Yeah.
Okay. How are students going to use printers?
Four-digit codes.
Four-digit codes?
Yeah.
Okay, and, like, when a teacher has to print, like, three hundred sheets of paper, and it's like four teachers at once doing that, how is that going to work?
They have to walk to the next printer.
Okay.
Who ever gets a printer first?
That's right, it's a race.
He's got to turn to the Hunger Games for printing.
It might. Like I said, it's, it's a change in the way that we do things, but if you were to go and look at other school districts or other businesses, in fact, Colby University uses the same system. Most big organizations don't have that many small printers. It's just not cost-effective.
More so uses the same.
And I, we don't, we don't have up-to-date data, but I know, we, we began looking at this four years ago, the prior lease, but with COVID, our counts were way down, the printers were, we could extend the warranty on those printers for four more years. But I think it's like somewhere between three and four times more expensive for print on the small desktop printer versus the multifamily. It's like three and a half cents versus one cent for two cents, something, something like that. So, that sounds minimal, but you take a building like of this size over the course of the year, it can be significant.
Well, I think you think more about what you're printing to versus the printer that's sitting right next to you and the printer that you have to walk down the halls of.
We're going to do the very best that we can to make it as, as easy as we can. We know it will be a transition, and it will be different, and it will be a little rocky at first, no doubt, but we're going to work as hard as we can to make it as easy as we can.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, this wasn't in your report, but maybe you could save this for another report in the future, but I'd just like to know how the math curriculum rollout has gone out from here, or if you've got, like, a G U S S kind of post-year.
Yeah. Really well. So, I think in this report, I talked about how we had the staff development specialists come back from M L O Cs twice, actually. So, she's been amazing. And she actually just came back to work with teachers, and then she came back, she came back on a Friday, and then she offered to come back on a Monday for our team meeting where she helped us review the report cards. So, that was even an extra bonus to kind of better align with the curriculum. But she's been amazing, and the teachers are really positive about it. I think they've learned a lot this year, and they want to redo it again. So, now that they've done it once, they're like, okay, I want to try it, try it again. So, yeah, really positive. Very, very positive feedback. Yeah. Next year, we also have a whole bunch of, like, a list of things that we're going to work on for next year, too, so that's kind of nice. So, yeah, I couldn't really be happier, but.
Very much.
We have some, you know, there's always things, and you're like, okay, we got to do this a little better and that, but overall, very positive. Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, thanks for asking.
Anything else? The athletics update was with Mark's report, business manager report.
I give you an update on our games. I'm getting texts.
Oh, yeah, that's too bad. That would be great.
So, softball is at McGraw for the first round of sectionals. It is tied five-five at the top of the seventh inning.
Ooh.
And our boys' baseball team is at Stockbridge Valley, and we were up five-two in the fifth inning. So, there's an athletic update, real time.
Yeah. Great. Thank you for that.
Do that more often.
Yeah, I like that.
I got a little ticker, yeah.
Not going to make a forum today?
Forum today? Oh, yeah, I can give that update. So, our golf team won the sectional championship.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Not just one, it was a.
They won the team championship, and then we had, we had two golfers qualify for the state qualifying meet at Seven Oaks. So, first time, they've won the league championship in many, many years, and two-time, first time we've had two qualifiers in many years. So, very exciting. Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I'm going to go.
Go ahead.
Backwards for a quick second. When are we going to announce the valedictorian, salutatorian? I see they've been selected and notified, but it didn't say who they were.
I don't know if Mark, I think Mark is working on coordinating with the parents when they can be there and announce it.
Great.
Yeah.
And you're just waiting.
Yeah.
So excited. Okay. We'll let you go now, then.
Yeah, I just have one thing to, to follow up on, and that is the, the ongoing process of electrification of, of school buses. So, I think I shared maybe in February, March, that we had engaged with a company to, to conduct a fleet study. That was completed, the initial fleet study. Bill, myself, Lorna, Randy, we, we were able to, we were on a webinar last week where the, they basically walked us through the report. It's pretty comprehensive. Basically, what they do for this initial fleet study is they come in and they look at your existing bus runs, and they tell you with today's technology whether or not any of those runs could be electrified with, with what is currently available. So, what they looked at is our, essentially is our seven regular bus runs. So, on a daily basis, we have five in-district bus runs, and then we have two out-of-district to, to outside placements. So, we have one that's primary special education to B O Cs, and then the other one that is the C T E program to B O Cs. And what, what they informed us was that three of those seven, and it's three of the five internal runs, could be electrified with what's available with today's technology. So, if we were going to buy an electric bus for next year, there's three existing runs that we would be able to just put that in place and be able to complete that one. So, we still have to dive into it. It's very technical, and frankly, a lot of things that I don't understand when you get into the, all the electrical jargon. But the two out-of-district runs obviously are not, I believe, one of the in-district runs is not as the one that incorporates our pre-K run. Obviously, that has to be, that would have to be recharged to be able to go back out. And then, my guess is one of our, probably our longest, or the one that has the most tills, we travel this, travel this way. So, so it's a good, it's a good starting point. They recommended that also for those three runs, if we were to implement them now, they would require a level-three charger, not a level-two. A level-two is like what a Tesla would have, but a level-three is the enhanced. But they, they told us that as, as we move through this process, you know, the technology is going to improve. The big concern from the company in going through this with us, I think they've, they've come to a better understanding of what smaller rural school districts, I think they've done a lot of these, is really the extracurricular trips, sporting events, field trips. You know, even our B O Cs run, which is roughly a hundred, a hundred miles round trip, that's, that's going to take a lot of technology upgrades and a lot of enhancements for that to happen. So, it's interesting. We'll kind of move on to phase two now for us, where we'll get in touch with the village and start talking about service. Some other good news, we are now on a list through N I S R D A for some funding opportunities. So, we're currently, at the very least, trying to get this study covered, and then next steps as far as what, what's next. So, we're, we're well on our way to being engaged throughout this process. It's coming, so.
With the information that they've provided on the survey, does, does that information allow us to say, like, if the technology changes and they come out with new buses in the coming years, be able to look at the specs, and then you say, like, this meets our needs?
I think so, yes. And I think what, this, this is sort of the baseline, and then, as we keep moving through it, the, the parties that are involved in future planning will reference this and know exactly what all these numbers mean in terms of the number of amps, number of volts. There's kind of a bulleted list of what they would recommend doing as far as the service in the building to prepare for those technological advancements.
Lot of infrastructure upgrades that would have to happen.
I was just going to ask about that. Is that just our fleet, or does it include any infrastructure?
No, that, that, they simply looked at your existing runs and could you electrify them now? It, I think, frankly, I think the reason we became present on some of these N I S R D A lists is thi- this is being met with a lot of opposition throughout the state and various communities. So, I don't know this for sure, but my guess is they're, certainly based on need, based on wealth, we did make the cut, and as certain communities are, are pushing back, and there's opposition, the, the length, the, the list is broadening. So, it'll be interesting to see. I, I don't have specific data, but I'm sure in the next week to ten days, I'm, I'm sure there's probably some referendum that are up today across the state, that we may learn how, how this is being received across, across the state. I know there are districts that have had significant funding available to them for the actual purchase of buses, and I can throw that down. So, yes, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot in the next couple of years. There's still, I think, some general feeling that the timelines are going to be pushed back. They're going to have to be. We're just not going to be able to meet the demands of school districts, and so, we're on our way.
I don't want to, like, be this point to forever, but is, have, has, regularly have you and other business members any discussions about sharing, charging, especially for the extracurriculars or?
We have, we haven't. That's a big question, though. You know, if we, like, tonight, for example, if our team is at McGraw, where does the bus go when the game's going down? Is there going to be a charging station?
Because it seems like.
Who pays for it?
On average, it should be a wash. If we just, you charge here, we charge there.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I guess the B O Cs would be the big question, if you can charge the B O Cs.
Well, the problem then becomes the distance you are from where you need to be, right? So, like, right now, we have a central maintenance office where we do all of our B O Cs, or our busman maintenance, which is extremely efficient and it's extremely productive. But we couldn't charge our buses there.
Right.
To then employ to do our runs within the district. Wouldn't be feasible, so.
Another districts might have their charging station further away.
Right, right, right.
So, we, we are going to sort of expand our conversations, I think, long-term. I think definitely collaboration to some extent makes sense, even locally. If there are other entities in this immediate range of where we are and where we operate that are going to be looking at electrification, I think it makes sense to have conversations about what that might look like. Oftentimes, funding is, is more readily available if there is collaboration. general feeling that the timelines are gonna be pushed back. They're gonna have to be. We're just not gonna be able to meet the demands of school districts. So we're on our way.
I don't wanna like be this point to forever, but is, have, has originally have you and other business managers any discussions about sharing, charging? Like especially for the extracurriculars or?
We haven't, we haven't. That's a big question though. You know, if we, like tonight, for example, if our team is at McGraw, where does the bus go when the game's going down? Is there gonna be a charging station?
Cause it seems like.
Who pays for it? How's it get, yeah?
On average, it should be a wash. If we just, you charge here, we charge there.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I guess the BOSEs would be the big question. Can we charge the BOSEs?
Well, the, the problem then becomes the distance you are from where you need to be, right? So like right now, we have a central maintenance office where we do all of our BOSEs or our busman maintenance, which is extremely efficient and it's extremely productive. Um, but we couldn't charge our buses there
Right.
to then employ to do our runs within the district. Wouldn't be feasible. So, um.
Another districts might have their charging station further away.
Right, right, right.
So we, we are going to sort of expand our conversations. I think long-term, I think definitely collaboration to some extent makes sense, even locally. If there are other entities in this immediate range of where we are and where we operate that are gonna be looking at electrification, I think it makes sense to have conversations about what that might look like. Oftentimes funding is, is more readily available if there is collaboration. So a lot of questions, not a lot of answers.
And it's gonna change the landscape of operations. And we think about extracurriculars, athletics, field trips. All of those things are gonna have to be looked at now. You know, do they have a charging station? Can we charge? Do we have enough to get there? Like, there's a lot to think through this process.
There been any conversation within like the athletic conferences and things like that about possibly having to like read?
This, this is, yeah, yeah. This is going, I think this is going to force the hand of athletics to look at the way they schedule and the way leagues are, are developed and drawn up, you know? We travel through neighboring towns that we don't play to go play other schools. It might be we play locally now and, and don't travel to Old Forge, you know, Remsen, Poland. And we play Madison, Stockbridge, you know, from a league standpoint. So. It's gonna be, yeah, there's gonna be a lot to think about. Yeah.
See, a lot of layers to it. We're sort of baby steps. So there are requirements now that school districts are are doing things and being diligent in the process. So we're well on our way of documenting what we've done, obviously, with these studies and conversations we're gonna have in the village and potentially other entities, I guess.
Any other questions for Matt?
Did they, they evaluated just the buses? Is there an opportunity at some point to like, there's a lot of other vehicles, right? Like suburban, I mean, can you start small and kind of, or does it, is that just a drop in the bucket?
So they, yeah, so what they, what they looked at was our existing bus runs. So suburban is used as, as a secondary means of transport. So it's not one of our seven regular ones. And that's what they said. When, when they do these fleet studies, they have to pick something that they can really look at and really focus in on. So um, if, if, if say we had the suburban being employed on a daily basis and that was a regular run, then that would have been considered. But these were just the seven runs that we do.
Yes, right, okay.
And I, I, I don't know if I shared this. I, we, we got quotes this year. We got quotes and this was back in around the first of the year. So the quote for a full-size seventy-passenger electric bus was about four hundred and fifty something thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a thirty-passenger van that we call them, you know, the smaller buses was three twenty-five. And then that, that's just for the bus. So, um, the, the, the additional money for, um, you know, upgrading those chargers, there's obviously a lot of that too. There's other question from, you know, on the fiscal side of things, you know, if they're, if a life expectancy matters, and the buses are, 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 it's recommended that you bond out for longer than the life expectancy of the, which.
You think the bond is twelve years?
Twelve years.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. And life expectancy is seven?
Five to seven.
Five to seven?
By the time you're on your third pass, you're still paying off your first or something.
So it's, it's, there's, there's a lot, a lot of questions. I do think there, there will be districts though that, um, just met with our architects recently. I think Newfield outside of Vifica is, is hoping to purchase one for next year, contingent on a successful vote. So there will be districts that are employing them and we'll be able to see how things go.
One district up north just bought one. It was in our, you know, we got, I forget which one.
I think Adirondack.
Yeah.
That may, it may have been voted down in Adirondack.
I think that was the one that received funding and, but it, it got voted down.
Oh, 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 oh.
Cause I specifically asked that when I met the architects and they were very familiar with it and they said, yeah, there was, they, they had everything ready to go and then it got voted down. So. Yep.
Well, thank you for all your work on that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I can, I can share with you too. We, we'll probably, we can put it on the website. I, I don't know how much it's gonna mean to those laypersons to just look at this, but.
It's interesting though, because they, uh, they took into, um, like temperature variances, how that affects the route and the charge and the, it's pretty interesting.
Nothing else I think?
What's that?
Oh, yeah.
I know some people don't read every word.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I love, I'm one of those people.
Yeah.
All right. Tensei with the student board member report.
All right. Keep drawing your attention to things that are probably not gonna get your attention. So.
They always do. We appreciate you and your perspective.
I think you're focused on the bus issue and stuff, but anyways.
That's Matt.
Um, today I have AP classes for the first one. Um, so as AP exam season hits its stride, reporting on issues with AP classes at HCS seems appropriate. Generally, we have a robust AP program boasting eight of the best courses College Board offers. I don't know if you guys have a list of them, but they're pretty good. Um, however, there are still a decent number of issues with our AP program that we may be able to solve. The first and most sweeping issue is the timing of AP classes. College Board creates their curriculum with the expectation that we start in August and end in May. Since we start later, we miss out on around a month of expected instruction time. To counter this, our teachers do one of two things. Assign large assignments equivalent to around a month of instruction time, uh, over the summer. Or try to speed up the curriculum as much as possible by cutting out enrichment content and teaching directly to the contents of the exam. In both cases, there are some severe downsides. Assigning large amounts of summer work means having the students do self-study for the first units of the course. Without a teacher to oversee this work, the quality is usually lackluster and come time of the exam, students are far less prepared for these units than others learned in school. The other option teachers try is speeding through the curriculum, leaving clear holes in the depth the teacher can go into for each topic. It also means that even a single break in instruction due to a snow day or a teacher being sick can completely derail the schedule a teacher has planned for. This strategy leaves little to no time for review also. The result in both cases is that our AP students are disadvantaged when taking the exams according, or compared to other students from other districts. Particularly, I think it's like the South that follows the College Board schedule, right?
Mm-hmm.
So since we cannot expect College Board to change their test dates anytime soon, we, we have to create a solution to this issue. There are no definite answers, but I believe the board administration should start thinking about this issue. Questions such as how much summer, or how should summer assignments be styled? Or how can we relieve the pressure of tight AP sched- or tight schedule for AP classes are ones we should focus on. And I realize that that is a ridiculous claim to say right now, but you know, it's okay. Um, and the second one I have is the update to the land acknowledgement. Um, so not long after the last board meeting, the SSAC team traveled to the Shakawi, right? Cultural Center of the United Nation. We learned a lot from this trip, including, uh, the history from the initial Haudenosaunee Confederation all the way to modern times, um, their place today and much more. The following steps in this process are the creation of an official land acknowledgement draft, um, then editing it within all the groups in our school and then presenting it to the United Nation for approval before it can finally go public. And hopefully we have at least a rough draft complete by the end of the month and a more refined version, uh, by the start of next year. And then in other related views, uh, Mrs. Thomas emailed us requesting that we present to the fourth graders, we're going on a field trip to the Cultural Center soon, uh, to talk about what we have learned. Um, and I think this could be the start of like tradition for HCS where a group of high school students like SSAC would go on the, basically trip to the Cultural Center and learn kind of like how we did. And then after the trip, present to the elementary students who will go and do the same thing, but as elementary students. This tradition would be an excellent way for us to maintain a relationship with the United Nation and educate both younger and older generations of HCS students, uh, about this critical part of our history. Slight update, since I've written this, we had another meeting where, uh, we basically agreed that by the next meeting, you all at least have like a sort of personal draft uh, for the land acknowledgement. And then hopefully by the meeting after that, we'll have a official rough draft. If that makes sense.
And the entire SSAC has volunteered to help Mrs. Thomas, um, with the fourth graders at our meeting. They all, she only asked for a couple, but everybody wants to be involved. So I thought that was really positive and powerful. So.
Yeah.
Except for the people that weren't there.
Yeah.
I'll talk to them.
Okay.
Heather, is this a trip that already the fourth graders have been going on every year or is this the first year that they're gonna be doing this?
No, this is actually the first year. And so because Tensei, um, presented the board meeting, when the field trip came across, I just was like, oh my gosh, this is such a great connection. So, um, then I just thought it was important to kind of pull in before they go, some of the thoughts that um, that group has had and the concept of land acknowledgement too isn't something I don't think. So I'm really excited about it. So thank you for, for rolling with it. And, and I do, I can envision that. Um, if it's perfect with fourth grade curriculum and it would just be kind of a neat thing for fourth graders to collaborate with. So.
It's interesting too. Soon more so, it's one of the summer projects, um, that they're working on land acknowledgement as well. So that might be another bridge to kind of connect and work on that together. I think they're just starting that process as well.
It's pretty convenient.
So, yeah, they're talking about putting in like Three Sisters Garden and things like that. So there might really be some collaboration opportunities there. So, so I can connect you with the person working on that. We wanna do that.
And to say two quick things, I, I was just at a meeting up at Syracuse, Syracuse University and they have the display on their campus, the Iroquois Nation flag. I don't know if the Oneida Nation has a flag or if that's something maybe part of your land acknowledgement. Uh, cause you were thinking about like a physical display, which I think is a great idea. Maybe that could also be part of it is, is having that flag.
Yeah. Uh, so I think it's the like Haudenosaunee Confederation flag, which is based off of the belt, I forget what they're called. But it's like a belt that basically signifies a treaty. So that one that, the purple one with the white, the one that we all see, uh, with like the, is it like the four thing?
Five.
Five, yeah, four, but like four squares and then the one in the center. That is the one that, uh, represents the Confederation and the founding of it, which is why it like, that's their flag. So that one, I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, great. And then, um, maybe also getting, uh, agriculture involved. I know I've seen up there just near Oneida, there's a maple farm that's, uh, that's on the, on the, um, land.
That's right in front of the cultural center.
Yeah. So it seems like there's some connections there that might not just be
Mm-hmm.
simply cultural, but like tying in a lot of other, the subjects that we have here and especially with agriculture, seeing some interesting ties there. But yeah, great work.
Yeah, thank you for all that. SCL report was posted. Would be, any questions or anything on that?
I love the pictures. I just need to put that out there. I absolutely love the pictures. It's great. Like you read it all and then you see those pictures at the end. It just makes you smile every time. So. Thank you, Ridae. Um, brings us to eight point seven knowledge sharing, uh, Elementary Steering Committee.
Yeah, we're gonna, um, I think Heather already said, but we're gonna review the code of conduct in our meeting Thursday. Last week, we had a little discussion about, um, like AI in the classroom at an elementary level and um, Heather talked about the magic school initiative that like helps to incorporate that, I think, into classrooms. I'm not sure exactly. Um, we don't participate in that yet. It was just something that you were gonna look into, I think. Uh, we talked about, uh, writing a grant for the, uh, Communities Foundation. Um, they have like off-cycle grant applications that maybe could fund some after-school clubs. Um, so I think we're looking into that. We talked again about lockers in the elementary wing, how they want hooks, like the lockers are very hard to use. So I don't know. That, that's just something that, um, has been talked about a lot. Like it's hard for them to fit their backpacks in lockers.
We, we have talked about that in our pre-planning for our next capital project.
Okay. Yeah. I think they were saying just, just hooks. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we talked a little bit about the HCS reads program and how that was received by parents and different ways that that might change in the future or, um, you know, based on feedback, working to get some guest speakers into the classrooms during that time to kind of have some parent volunteer readers or different, um, teachers do guest readings in the classroom. I think that was, oh, and then the fa- Family Science and Technology Night, which is tomorrow from five to seven. And they're gonna do the Touch a Truck. So that was a big topic. There are gonna be twelve different stations, I think, with the Hamilton Public Library, lots of art, um, some STEM stuff. They're doing like the Lego building. Um, there's gonna be, I think the Utica Zoo mobile is coming.
Oh.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's a, a bee team from Rogers, maybe, uh, Honeybee's, yeah. So lots of, oh, and Joe Ekin is coming, just one more. So lots of different presentations for tomorrow. So everybody should go. Yeah. That was it.
Uh, Secondary Steering Committee?
Uh, we looked at last year, um, Mark and Chris had put together a survey of, of cellphone use. Uh, they went to parents and teachers and students and they, we looked at revamping that and kind of making some adjustments to that. Uh, and then to do it again and kind of seeing how the cellphone policy has, has been rolled out and how students are, and, and parents and teachers are, are perceiving those things. Ms. Kowalski brought up a, a lot of great ideas about making some changes to the Parent Teacher Conference, uh, to make it more useful. She was saying especially as an art teacher, like how she could contribute more. Sometimes, you know, parents aren't really too interested in figuring out how could their, how well their kids are doing in art. So maybe making the time with those teachers more helpful in, you know, running some workshops. For example, like how to use Google Classroom or, uh, how to use Parent Square or how to use School Tool. Thought of a lot of, all these things. It could be connected to the open house, but also might be, you know, things that could be taking place at the open house, but it could also be taking place in this Parent Teacher Conference and giving maybe more parent-focused as well at a time where parents might be a little more attuned to, oh, my kid needs help and here's the way so I could, could be helping them. So some really good ideas there. Especially cause a lot of the, you know, they talked about, a lot about how a lot of times this information, information on opportunities and ways to help kids, um, are, um, given to, to the kids and, and you know, not knowing exactly how much of that gets filtered into the parents. And so, uh, giving some direct access for parents to, to ask some questions about things. Even like the BOSEs or out of college museums, those type of things, uh, college prep opportunities, all those types of things. And then our student representative was talking a lot about, um, some other types of, uh, things that would be helpful for, for them. Thinking about, uh, attending more, they, uh, she was talking about they've attended some college fairs, uh, at other schools. So maybe making that more of a thing. And while there's a lot of individual college reps that come to campus, uh, that fair kind of has a different vibe to it and, and gets more people excited. Where maybe a college, one college rep draws a couple of students, but having that fair is like a special day. Even if it's something collaborating with other schools would be a good idea as well. And, and it was, she was especially thinking about that. The model of the wellness fair and how that's, that's been help, uh, helpful as well. And then, um, that could also include some other things like filling out the Common App or the FASCA Form, uh, and helping students with those things as well. So, so some of the, I think, a few things we, we discussed up going down.
Uh, inclusivity committee?
I have, um, two things to share. I apologize for my voice. I got, I got pretty bad seasonal allergies. And I'll start with the inclusivity committee. We have, um, a meeting coming up on May twenty-ninth. That's gonna be our last uh, session with Amy Coens from the Regional Information Center. Uh, and, um, that's part of the continued evaluation of the climate survey. And that'll kind of push us forward to, uh, developing our, uh, inclusivity action plan. So, uh, definitely looking forward to that. It's gonna be another long session, but, uh, an important one. Uh, I also wanna share, uh, some, uh, information that I learned, uh, from attending the NISWA Policy Workshop on AI. Uh, that was, um, very informative. Uh, it was presented by two presenters. Uh, one was Mike Doughty, the Assistant Superintendent of the Capital Region BOSEs and Jessica Goldstein from the, she's the Deputy Director of the Policy Services at NISWA. It was, uh, interesting. I didn't get a sense of how many different, how many schools were represented, but it seemed like it was a good, uh, audience and a lot of, uh, school districts thinking about AI. Mike Doughty spent a good chunk, chunk of his time explaining the, uh, uh, the technology. I won't get into all of that, but, uh, the biggest takeaway was sort of contextualizing why AI is having such an impact. It is, ChatGPT, for example, uh, is the fastest-growing app of all time. So it reached a hundred million users in just two weeks, uh, two months, I'm sorry. Uh, whereas compare that to most of the other popular apps, they, they take at least a year, two years, uh, to achieve that. And it's just to illustrate how prevalent the technology is. Uh, and he, uh, in that context, it went over some of the. And he, in that context, it went over some of the risks of potentially exposing sensitive information that, that we deal with school. Personal identifying information, confidential information. So just making school districts aware of those things. Not necessarily sending out the message that people shouldn't be using AI, but that it is being used and that there needs to be education for students, professional development for administrators, and things like best practices, guidelines for teachers. So that was very informative. Jessica Goldstein went into the policy aspect with that for boards. She provided us with a sample policy, which was paired with some instruction on how, how to approach writing a policy like this, being not too specific, but also not too broad. And the, the sample policy serves a couple of different functions, which is to acknowledge the current landscape as it relates to schools, and then setting the basic ground lines, uh, ground rules for, for this type of policy. So that's something that we should look at in the policy committee. The slides that were shared from the board job, I shared that with the board. So if you guys have any questions, definitely let me know, I'd love to chat.
Thank you for sending that, bringing that back.
I, just going back to inclusivity, that's one of the few committees, or was, um, one of the committees that the board does need to approve the members of that committee, and I think we, we do that at the reord meeting, we've only done it once, so.
Yes.
And I, and those are recommended by you, so maybe, I was just thinking maybe at the next meeting or sometime, that might be a discussion that the committee can have about making sure that all the voices that we want, you know, as many voices as possible represented there, making sure we have all the voices we need involved there.
I think that's a, that's a great point. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Advocacy update, I don't really have a lot, NISWA did release their twenty-four, twenty-five legislative priorities. I think that was sent to everybody, but if you didn't get that, let me know. In addition, NISWA is gonna be sending out a survey to all board members on June third. So they're really asking and encouraging everyone to take that, to try to update their services and what they can offer, what's worth them offering, what's not. So please take that. And then, this isn't super advocacy-related, but I just wanted to bring up because I know hotels are getting really hard to come by, but just wondering if we gave any more thought about the Lake Placid and the RSA Conference. I just wanted to kind of bring that up and get it on everyone's radar again. I think there's only one hotel left out of like the five that they had, so. I'm available and willing to go if there's anybody else that does wanna attend, but.
What were the dates of that again?
July, let's see.
Jody sent us an email on March fifteenth with all the information.
Okay, I'll find that.
The agenda, it's Sunday, July fourteenth to Tuesday, July sixteen.
Yeah, that's our reord meeting, right?
Yeah, that's our reord meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that won't work.
No.
Okay, so, good, let's just check that out. Good point, I didn't even register that, okay, perfect, so maybe something for the future.
Yeah.
All right, eight point nine board update, today, May twenty-first, vote from twelve to eight in the bus garage. And this brings us to nine point one, community participation. Nobody here, nothing online. So I think Michelle usually drags this out for a second, but. Now I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss matters regarding proposed pending or current litigation.
I'll move.
Second.